We will call our meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. To lead us today is Representative Annie Teetz. I ask that you would lead us in the pledge today. Thank you Representative Teetz, or former Representative I should say. Any opportunity we get to thank some of our public servants, especially the ones who always stood up for public education, time after time, that's because you were a teacher in your former life. We want to do that, so thank you for joining us and looking at it. Okay, our next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education adopt the agenda as presented.
Motion is there a second? Thank you Dr. Wickelson. Motion is second. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, there's none seen. I think we are ready to vote. I'm gonna need to vote by hand. I'll be voting aye. Members will come to order. Members will be in their seats. Representative Kirk. Okay, the next item on the agenda is school highlights, and I see Dr. Anderson is leading us, is walking down to lead us in a discussion.
We are so excited this evening. We have student awards and other recognitions to give to students. At this time, we're gonna start off with our student's award, a student award, as we start off with our students' first continued theme and philosophy. So first I'll be asking several people to come forward. Dr. Harrington, I believe, is she here this evening? She's gonna tell you a little bit about what the Infinitec Award is, and as she does that, then we'll go ahead and call up our staff and our principal, and maybe other people that should come up, and then we'll turn it over to Principal Dr. Gordon, our teachers, and preparing about our awards. So we'll start off with learning a little bit about what the Infinitec Award is.
For the last several years, we have belonged to the Infinitec Coalition, and as part of that, every year we have the opportunity to nominate some of our outstanding students who are using assistive technology in the classrooms. So this year, Ms. Hammacki has nominated two of her students, Tavion and Antonio Lewis, and both of them were selected across Kansas to receive the award. So I think it's very rare for us to have two nominees and two award winners. Ms. Hammacki?
Good evening, everyone. I am Carrie Hammacki, and I am a special ed teacher at McClure Elementary School. I have had the honor of being the teacher of these two special young men for three years. I would like to take a moment to introduce the boys and their families. Please get us to call, or stand up when I call your name. Antonio and Tavion Lewis. Their parents, Natasha and Rwanda. Aunt and uncle, Emily and Joel. And we have grandparents, Amy and Dan, with us here tonight to help the boys celebrate. I, with the help of Paula Waters and Marlene Greber and Allison Gatewood, nominated the boys to receive the Student Technology Awards through the Kansas Infinitec Coalition. The goal of the program is to celebrate the accomplishments of learners with disabilities who attend schools in Kansas, who have demonstrated outstanding achievement in overcoming challenges accompanying personal goals using technology. The boys are gonna give a speech right now, so an award acceptance speech.
My name is Antonio Lewis. I'm in third grade at McClure Elementary School. I am a twin, and my brother's name is Tavion. I would like to thank my parents and teachers for helping me to learn to use my communication device. I appreciate my teacher Carrie Hamm for nominating me for this award. My name is Tavion Lewis. I'm in third grade at McClure Elementary School. I am a twin, and my brother's name is Antonio. I would like to thank my parents and teachers for helping me learn to use my communication device. I appreciate my teacher Carrie Hamm for nominating me for this award.
This is the award ceremony that we had. The boys had a video that was done on them down in Infinitec, and I do believe we have that here to share tonight. Can you go ahead and do that?
Our first award recipient is Antonio Lewis from Topeka. All right, Antonio. This song was Gummy Bear, and it is one of Antonio's favorites. And as each award winner comes up, you will hear some of their favorite musics. Some are very new to me as a grandmother, but I'm sure all of you out there are much more hip. So we would like to tell the story of Antonio, so please turn your attention to either of the screens. Here is Antonio.
Antonio is a nine-year-old young man from McClure Elementary School into Topeka Public Schools USD 501. Antonio has autism, and has been using assistive technology for three years to help him communicate with people around him. He now uses the iPad with the Abaz communication app, and he is able to show everyone that he is a young man with a lot to say. He is now able to tell everyone about his love for bugs, fish, music, and he can use his device to help him ask his parents to watch the movie A Bug's Life. Technology has opened so many doors for him, allowing him to show everyone what a very social young man he is. In his spare time, Antonio enjoys playing basketball and soccer with his brother, and listening to books that are read to him. Antonio has grown from a boy who used to use gesture and actions to communicate his wants and needs to a young man with a voice. His teachers are so proud of him and are eager to see his accomplishments in the years to come.
Antonio, we are so proud of you. Bravo, bravo. All right, let's move on to our next winner, and this young man's name is Tavion Lewis, and he might look familiar. Come on, Tavion. Tavion, I hear you have a brother who's here today, and I think he looks just like you. Are you a twin? Okay, yes, indeed. All right, we're gonna now watch your story, Tavion.
Tavion is nine years old, and he is from the McClure Elementary School in Topeka Public Schools USD 501. Tavion has a diagnosis of autism, and he uses an iPad with the Abaz app to help him with communication. This technology has been life-changing for Tavion, as he uses it independently to participate in activities and classroom discussions within his general education classroom. Tavion's progress in learning to communicate through the Abaz app has given his teachers and peers a glimpse into what he is thinking. He is able to express his feelings and opinions, and interact with others. In his spare time, Tavion enjoys swinging, reading books, watching SpongeBob SquarePants and Fairly Odd Parents, and playing games on the iPad. He's been described as a boy whose ability to express himself has grown exponentially since the implementation of technology. He finally has a tool to help him connect his many thoughts and ideas with the world.
Tavion, we're so proud of you. Please accept our award, and a McDonald's gift certificate. He liked the award, but he might think McDonald's is gonna be a little too much. Right, congrats.
At this time, we were talking about, I guess our students have something to pass out to board members. Board members, can you come to the middle? We'll do the picture, and they have something that they want to give you. Our amazing Principal Dr. Gordon, please come one up, as well as any of the McClure staff, special ed staff that would like to come up to be in the photo. Board members, while you're up front, the students have something they want to give you. This will make this a little bit easier finishing with that. And maybe Dr. Gordon up here, too. She doesn't know this, but we got her a lot also. Can you get this to Dr. Gordon? Thank you. Thank you, guys. Dr. Gordon, do you want to step or just come over? Well, I talked about good teaching, and I believe Dr. Gordon is gonna say, she's gonna be making some final remarks on the Infinitec Awards. Dr. Gordon is the principal of McClure. We also want to acknowledge that today, Dr. Gordon received the National School of Character Award. Nice surprise. And her students were there, and her students, okay, in Tennessee. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Gordon to make some comments about her school and/or the Infinitec Awards and other guests that are with her.
We're very, very proud of our students. You know, some students can become very close to your heart, and the Lewis boys are close to our heart. But even more amazing is the wonderful work that Carrie Hammacki has done with those boys. I remember them coming to McClure at preschool in Ms. Carroll's class, and I was in a panic. I hope my face didn't show that, but I had never had a student that had challenges with communication, so I had absolutely no idea how we were going to serve those students. And Ms. Carroll started them off, and then Ms. Hammacki took over, and you, I'm just amazed, awed, and just so inspired by the work that she has done, not only with those two boys, but other students that we have who are on the spectrum. So hats off to her and her team. The parents worked very hard right alongside her, and I just want to say thank you, Carrie, for all that you've done for our students. Thank you so much. That being said, while I'm up here, I got permission to say that our school received two awards today. She announced the second one. The first one was being recognized as the Kansas School of Character, as we've been to the board meeting earlier this year. And so we received that award and had no idea, absolutely no idea, that the national award was going to be announced there. And so to say that I was speechless and tears just kind of crept out, but you know, all of this would not have happened without my wonderful team at McClure, my teachers, my students. I'd like to, my fifth grade students, to stand up, who are a part of our fifth grade Leadership Academy, and they have done a wonderful job this year, learning even more about the six pillars and about what stands as good character at McClure. So I'm gonna thank my students and parents for coming this evening. We couldn't do it without all of their support. It's really, truly a team effort, not only staff, but also parents, our paraprofessionals. We even have our community members who participate in some parts of our training for our good character and character education at McClure. The key person that I wanted to introduce to the board, though, is the gentleman who brought us character counts and character education to McClure four years ago. So if Dr. Hackley would come forward, please, I just want to introduce him to you, and say that our school community is better for it. Dr. Hackley's been involved in character education for more years than I know, and he has been working with our school, usually comes to Topeka at least two times a year to provide training for our staff, for our families, for our students. And as I said before, part of this award is his fault and then her fault, because Dr. Anderson decided after she met us and saw a little bit of what we were doing that we should apply for an award, and as I said earlier, I tried to come up with a couple of excuses that she totally ignored. And so on we go with our application, and then the results are what we had today. So Dr. Hackley, I just want you to just say a couple of words, say your hello to our board, and just want you to know how deeply we appreciate what you've done for us.
Well, I thank you, Dr. Gordon, Dr. Anderson, for the opportunity to work at McClure. I've been in character and ethics education now for about thirty years, but this work at McClure has been the highlight of my career, and it's the best place to end it. I would have ended about four years ago, but I met Dr. Gordon, and I was so impressed with what she was trying to do, but I've extended to into my fifth retirement, it has been wonderful. The staff, the students, everybody supporting this effort has made it easy, and like most leaders, you can just kind of stand back and orchestrate it, so that when you walk away, they can all say, "We did it ourselves," and that's what I want to be able to say.
You should also know that Dr. Hackley has donated his services. When he flies in town and he works with them, he has been doing that at his own cost. So sir, we very much thank you for your investment in Topeka Public Schools and your contribution to McClure.
My debt to education will never be repaid, and so I try to do it this way.
Thank you.
At this time, we would like for Ms. Stephanie Harson to come up. She will be highlighting a bit of recognition for, from the NEAT. Ms. Harson, while you were here, can you also read the proclamation? It'll be done under consent, but can you do that as well? I'll turn it over to Mrs. Harson.
Thank you very much. I will start with the proclamation. It says, "Whereas teachers make public schools great, and whereas teachers work to open the students' minds to keep ideas, knowledge, and dreams, and whereas teachers keep American democracy alive by laying the foundation for good citizenship, and whereas teachers fill many roles as listeners, explorers, role models, motivators, and mentors, and whereas teachers continue to influence us long after our school days are only memories, and whereas National Teacher Day will be celebrated on May 9th, 2017, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Unified School District Number 501, Topeka, Kansas, does proclaim May 9th, 2017 as National Teacher Day." So thank you very much. On behalf of the National Education Association of Topeka, I'm excited to accept this, and I just want to say a couple of things here this evening. You've seen a couple of examples of what is possible when families work together with teachers and staff, when community members fly in from far away to help us support our students the way that they need and deserve to be supported, that all students, students who come from urban settings, students with any kind of need, can succeed if they're supported in the right way, and it was wonderful to see that tonight. Beyond that, as a special education teacher, it touches my heart to see our work being recognized in this way. It's wonderful. But I will say that even though I feel called to this profession, and I know that this is what my life's work is supposed to be, because I can see students like this realize their dreams, it is hard to teach right now in this time. And I had a situation every year about this time when the legislature's debating school funding, and we have conversations about whether our students are really worth the investment that they were talking about putting forth for them. I catch myself noticing things, and what I noticed in the last few weeks is what seems really trivial, but I was in a meeting, and someone had an envelope about this size, and they were writing out to someone, and they made a mistake. They scratched it out, and they were going to reuse it, and they said, "Oh, no," and they went to throw it in the trash. Both myself and another teacher went to grab that envelope, and we said, "Oh, no, no, don't throw it that way. We can use that." Now, that is the level to which we are ingrained to think about using resources carefully. Things that by their very nature are meant to have one use, we try to figure out how to use ten or twenty times. Trash bags are reused again and again until they're beyond the point of being used. Post-it notes, we know how to use those two or three times. We figure that out. Envelopes, those kinds of things, manila folders, et cetera, et cetera. And so what I ask that our citizens think about, our Board of Education, our leaders in our community, our legislators think about, is if we really are putting our focus where we should be. Are people who are capable of doing the great things that Ms. Hammacki is capable of doing, should she really be focusing on reusing post-it notes and envelopes, manila folders, to save pennies here or there? Or should she be investing her full attention, her full talent, in supporting the greatness that our students are capable of achieving? And so that's just the message that I kind of carry forth. You give us the tools, we know how to get the job done. That is clear, again and again, but we need the tools. Thank you. Happy teacher education.
And now for our attendance award. As you know, this year we start with this award so that every month a school gets the award based on the highest attendance. The attendance award for April goes to, at ninety-six point three percent, Scott Dual Language Magnet. Come on up, Scott, now.
Well, we knew how heavy it was, because this is our second month in a row to get this award, so we're very proud and excited. But I want to say that, Vanessa Castillo here, she's one of our wonderful students who has, what is this, May 4th? She has one hundred percent perfect attendance, up to two days. So we wanted to bring her here and showcase the beauty of one of our students, and "Agradecer a su familia por siempre tenerle nuestra escuela, todos los días a tiempo sin irse temprano." I just told, you know, "Thank you so much for having her, their student, at our school every day, on time and not leaving early, because that's the best way to learn," so, which is "Gracias a la familia," okay? And do you want to say something? Also, I'm sorry, I got tripped. Yes, but I also want to highlight Mrs. Droge, who is retiring this year, and we're very sad to see her go, but after twenty years with Scott, she is instrumental in keeping track, accurate track, of student attendance. And, you know, her and Sandy Marshall, our counselor, who's, we all had to scatter and divide and conquer, but we have a band strings concert, so she's there, and Ms. Suleika Reynoso, who is our communities and schools, they three work as a team to ensure that all our records are, you know, kept accurately. And Mrs. Hop here is one of our wonderful staff, and one who, you know, also keeps track of attendance. It's just a huge deal. Mrs. Droge, do you want to say a few words? Come on.
I've enjoyed working at Scott since it opened in nineteen ninety-six, and will miss it. Have enjoyed the attendance part of it, too, so, thank you.
Do you have one question you'd like to ask our students?
So what is your favorite subject?
Math.
Math, okay. And what grade are you in?
Fourth.
What grade? Well, thank you for being here tonight.
To study, to have a good career.
And those conclude all of our awards at this time, and I will take Scott theirs, and I'll turn it back over to the rest.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Excellent to get a chance to be in the presence of three of our really great students. I'm certain I'm not the only one who is really looking forward to seeing what they're going to grow up and do. It's pretty awesome. Definitely great to see the Lewis twins, who will leave forever a speck in my memory now. Thank you. Definitely great also to see the folks from Scott, so, you know, they all are very close to me, everybody up there. My daughters, teacher, is there. My assistant principal, since my, you know, level started, and then Ms. Droge, who unfortunately has had to give far too many tardy services to the Woods kids, but that's, it's always because of me. Thank you for what you all do, and I think there is one thing that we do and we didn't need to do in this ticket photo with the board and with the Scott folks. Let's do that right now, and we'll quickly recess for five minutes, and seven oh five we give in. Okay, coming back to order. Our next item on the agenda is public comments, and we have been to this evening's whole script directly to our disposition of business by consent. Take it, everyone's got a chance to, had a chance to look at the consent calendar, and if so, there's no discussion, we're prepared to entertain our portion.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the items of business by consent as presented, and authorize the board president or the superintendent to sign the special project and purchasing contracts for and on behalf of the Board of Education.
So motion is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Wickelson. Motion is second. Any discussion on the motion? Everyone knows what is here. The only thing that I would, prior to voting, call attention to are the numerous, very generous donations that we have from patron folks in our community to our schools. It's always great to see that, and know how much our patrons support us. So, okay, I think the vote is open.
So, okay, I think the vote is open.
All votes are in.
Our first item on the agenda under the heading Superintendent's Report.
Really, at this time, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call our staff up that's gonna be doing our gifted presentation as the PowerPoint comes up. As that PowerPoint comes up, I also want to remind Board members that this evening, while we have the board meeting, Bishop is having their end of, end of year closing of schools event this evening. Of course, it's occurring at this time, so we're not there, but we want to certainly acknowledge all of our Bishop families that are celebrating this evening, the history of the school. As we prepare to begin, Mrs. Dr. Harrington and Ms. Brown and all of the staff that are coming forward, we'll prepare to begin.
Good evening. Tonight, we would like to give you an update on our gifted education program. A lot has changed since we were here last year, and we are going to just give you very brief highlights today, but if you have additional questions, please let us know. So, this year's gifted coordinator has been Susan Christensen. She is a retired Director of Special Ed with over 20 years' experience as a director, and we're fortunate to have her on our consulting teacher team. And then we have Mike Brown as the school coordinator of psychology with the updates on the number of students tested and number of students placed this year.
Good evening, Madam, or Dr. Anderson, President Wood, Board members. I'm gonna share some data like I always do every year, so we'll present the data, and then I'm sure you're going to have some questions, and so, we'll get to it. Okay, so when we look at gifted, gifted identification, this first slide tells us the number of referrals that we've had over the last hard years. So, as you can see, in 2012 to 2013, we had 88 students referred. And then you go down to 2016, 17, we had 137 students that were referred for gifted testing this year. So, that's, that's quite an increase, even when you look at from 2015, 16 to 2016, 17. And there are several reasons for that, and if we go to the next slide, you can see the breakdown by grade. Now, there were a couple of things that happened this year that might explain this. We do see a large increase at the eighth grade. So, that was an increase of nine referrals in that grade. And I think that I can attribute that to the increase of students that were referred based on Scantron scores. So, if you remember, last time I was here, I was talking about there are two ways for students to meet criteria for gifted. And one way is through performance on the Scantron Performance Series tests. Who would score at the 97 percentile in reading and math or an average of 97.5, they can automatically be placed in the gifted program. Okay? And so, previous policy was that they would be tested once a year, and we would only take those fall scores for placement. And the reason why that was, was because not every school, and especially not middle schools, were testing three times a year. Okay? That's only a few schools. Well, now, all the middle schools test using the Scantron three times a year. So, they have two more opportunities during the year than they previously had. And so, that's why I think we see an increase, especially with the eighth graders. Do you have any questions about these two slides?
Quickly?
Sure.
And only at the middle school level are we doing it three times a year, or is that all of them?
Well, I'm not going to speak for elementary, okay? I'm not sure how often they're doing it. Dr. Wallace, can you speak to how many times the Scantron?
That is all the schools.
It's administered three times.
Three times a year for all the schools.
Yeah, but I think that eighth grade year, that's when they're getting ready to go on to high school, and that's the only reason why I have that, that that's increased, because more of the middle schoolers are being assessed on a regular basis.
I need to ask you one more question.
Sure.
So, when you talk about referral, you're saying it's specifically just around that test? It's not like a parent referring them for testing, or a specific teacher, or?
Okay, that's a really good question. These are all referrals, K through 12, okay? Whether they come from parent, whether they come from teacher, all right? Whether they come out of the GEI team, all right, which is usually teacher, too. Of course, I've always had the opportunity to work with kids who are advocating for themselves, and they may refer themselves. Okay?
So, do the kids suddenly become gifted? That's my question.
Oh, okay.
Do kids suddenly become gifted? I mean, you've got some, you know, or do we miss them those first seven years, I guess is the question, so, you know, we've got much of them at eighth grade.
Yes. Well, we have, you know, because we have those two criteria. One would be that they score at a certain level on an intelligence test. Another would be those students that score at a certain level on achievement tests. So...
So, do those kids that, these are referrals, it's not necessarily successful, or are these kids that all entered the gifted program on this line?
These are students that were referred this, from 2016 and then in 2017. These aren't the kids that were placed, just referred and evaluated.
And evaluated.
Yes, sir.
Because my question though is, why did we not catch them earlier?
Well, on the achievement side, some of them may just be late bloomers, all right? That might be. We may be missing some, and that's why we're doing the screeners.
Because my personal experience with my own children who are in the gifted program, once they get in high school, we love our counselor at Topeka High.
Yes.
He's retiring, I think, this year, but nonetheless, there's not a lot of advantage, in my opinion, other than that he has a gifted counselor that kind of guides and coaches him, you know? And so, I would focus on trying to figure out who these kids are sooner than once they're in eighth grade, because by time they're in eighth grade, the real benefit, I think, is somewhat diminished.
And Dr. Mickelson, to that point, and I'm so glad that you shared that, Dr. Harrington and I were just having this very conversation about middle school and chasten specifically as we were talking about staffing, but even as you drive that down to the very early years. Dr. Harrington or Ms. Christensen, if you'd like to speak to that comment in terms of gifted overall and the continued way in which we will be looking at how to make sure as many kids as possible get services, services of any type, for time, we're talking about gifted, but how to continue to expand that from an instructional standpoint. Do you want to speak at all to that, or anyone else, including Ms. Brown or Dr. Brown?
I was just gonna share that we have hired a replacement for our Topeka High gifted position that's leading. She's a consultant at KSD and a former gifted teacher here, and during the interview, she shared that she felt her own high school experience as a gifted student was lacking. And so, she wants to work with Rebecca Morrissey at Topeka High and try to increase the number of opportunities that kids have there. So, I'm very excited about that, and I think that we'll see some changes. In addition to that, Dr. Anderson and I discussed just the screener, you know, we've used the Niglari and we've used the COGAD, and whether we're actually getting the results we want from that, or if we need to be looking at something else. So, Dr. Anderson has suggestions that I think we're gonna come together as a team and look at as we need to make additional changes to identify more students sooner.
And to speak to that, when we look at the number of students that are placed as a result of the screener, you know, that eventually meet the criteria for special ed, I have that data and I can tell you how much we spent on the screener. We spent $4,788 on the screener this year for second grade and for sixth grade, district wide. And in 2014, 15, of those students that were screened and tested, we placed 16 out of all the kids that were screened and evaluated as a result of the screener. And last year, we placed nine. So, we had to, you know, weigh that. Is the screening successful? Are we getting the students that we need to get and get them early? You know, I think all screeners are limited, but we've spent $4,700. But when I sit across from a parent and a child in a gifted eligibility meeting like I did two weeks ago, there was a second grader, Hispanic second grade girl, and her mother, and she qualified for gifted. And this was a student who was not referred by her teacher. This was the basis of the screener that got her referred for gifted. Was it worth that $4,700, maybe for that one kid? Maybe so.
Madam, so I guess just to your point, to respond immediately to what you just said, if you had to ask me, I would say yes. I would say across the district, $4,700. If the state ever does actually, you know, fund, you know, the school fund as formula as it should, that would be about one student's basic payment per pupil.
Correct.
So, I think that's, that's definitely something we ought to be going for. I think to Dr. Mickelson's point, it is interesting when you look at, you know, the number of students who are referred, and I'd like to see that data kind of broken down across all of our different demographic groups. I'm always curious. You know, endeavor is lost on me how much being identified and referred for gifted, you know, has to do with the perspective of whoever the instructor is and what gifted looks like to them. And, you know, kind of the social capital that, and the cultural capital that the parents would have, you know, there's a lack of advocacy on behalf of students for parents is often missing for...
Some of our communities.
People are gonna have limited cultural capital, they're not gonna understand those, you know, connections. So, that, that would be my only request, I guess, on if you have that breakdown.
I have that for you, and I can leave that with Dr. Anderson. She can make copies.
Thank you.
As we go to the next slide, then Mrs. Brown will answer any additional questions at the very end.
Good evening. My name's Susan Christensen, and I'm tickled to be here tonight. We made a few changes this year. When I came in, I talked to Dr. Barnhart and Dr. Harrington, and we kind of view our various experiences, tried to work out a few different things. So, a couple of our big accomplishments, we felt, our elementary facilitators have been at Lynn Elementary kind of by themselves, in their own little world with their students, working on projects Monday through Thursday or Friday. While we took them by, we also rearranged transportation so they wouldn't have to be on the bus that long. So, that allowed Fridays open. So, we had the teachers go out to the buildings of the students that they serve on Fridays. And I think in the beginning, it was like, what are we gonna do? And they've all come back and said they loved it. They get to see their students actually interact in the classroom, they get to see other students that the gifted kids interact with. So, we're hoping that if we continue that through next year, they'll have a better eye on maybe some of those kids and then be able to encourage teachers, they'll be looking for different characteristics. And so, they may be able to help with those processes of helping us identify some kids a little earlier just by what they see and how they see them interact. So, the kids are thrilled that they're there, they come up and give them a big hug, and you get to work with me today. So, that's been a real positive, I think, for both schools and students and the gifted staff. So, we're going to continue that next year. And also, our facilitators got together K through 12 at least four times this year, and we want to do it more next year. And it was really interesting to listen to them talk about what they each do, what's similar and what's different. And so, they're gonna, we're gonna try next year to do, have a common theme, something that the whole district will have a little bit of a piece of and an impact and try to get them together to work so there's a little bit of continuity from the whole district, K through 12. So, those are some things that we felt went really well this year, that the teachers felt a little more bonded to each other, they emailed back and forth, got ideas, that kind of thing. So, for next year, one of the big exciting things, I think, is that Lynn is gonna move to McCarter. So, those teachers will now be in a building, they'll have a collaborative group of teachers to work with on a regular basis, they'll be able to see how general ed curriculum really ebbs and flows and that their projects, how they can extend what the gen ed curriculum is, so they're not so separate. So, we're trying to make them be a bigger part of a school community. So, we're really excited about that, and I've had some meetings with Mrs. Cooney, and we're, you know, trying to figure out where they're gonna go and where they're gonna put their stuff and, you know, how the buses are gonna work and those kind of things. So, everybody's really excited about that. Again, those facilitators, we're gonna continue to go out on Fridays and meet with those people, as well as be involved in some of that building team at McCarter, which I think will help them build some capacity when they go out on Fridays. And we're implementing some coordinated topics, like I said, and they're gonna be doing project based learning more at the elementary level that's coordinated between math, science, and language arts. In the past, they've pretty much done, they've had a turnover of staff, so they've each done a little bit of their own thing, kind of together. So, we have purchased the materials and curriculum so that we, with something called menus. And so, they are in each curricular area. Students will get menus of projects, ideas, and topics, and it will flow nicely between the three, the three curriculum areas. And then we're gonna continue to look at the referral data, the student identification, and hope that maybe our teachers can be, when they're out, do a little more eyes on, see if we can help facilitate that a little bit more. Do you have any questions? I talk kind of fast, so...
So, I can share with the board some plans as we move forward. You know, one of the things that we're studying are blue ribbon schools and schools that have high minority, high poverty, but have earned a national distinction. In those schools that have large numbers of students that are gifted, you know, there are a variety of things that you see, such as alternative screeners, which there is an alternative screener in place for Topeka, but alternative screeners at various ages. Yeah, the item is, you'll see a lot of teachers that have gifted certification that are in those districts. So, we pulled the certifications for our teachers to see how many of our teachers are gifted teachers, you know, that really understand what gifted education looks like, could identify kids. One, I believe, one, beyond the people that are teaching gifted. That's unusually low in terms of recruitment. And so, and part of looking at that, again, when you look at schools that are higher performing and you say, you know, what, what kinds of credentialing do teachers have, and what opportunities do we have to expand our base so we really can identify what does gifted look like? So, we know that piece. The other item that Mrs. Dr. Harrington and I most recently talked about, we were talking about a particular school that has a very small gifted population. And so, in this particular school, they have, you know, half a gifted teacher because their population is so small. It's one of the higher minority, higher poverty schools. And so, you know, the discussion for me really is, rather than having a halftime gifted teacher, would they have a full-time person? So, we can really start identifying who could potentially qualify, and what are some alternative screeners to expose kids who might be trying to make the high jump but standing in the ditch. You know, if you start a school and you have limited language and you have, but perhaps you're gifted, but your exposure and access has been so limited that it just doesn't, you, you don't see it as quickly, or it's not identified, or... And so, I think those alternative pieces and having some intentionality behind studying other models will bring a new lens to what we do here. And I think that will automatically change, you know, what that looks like. And whether a student is labeled gifted, or whether a student is getting education that's, you know, the services that a gifted student would get, I think those are also conversations, whether you have a gifted teacher just for gifted kids, or can you have that teacher full-time to expose? full-time to expose all potential kids who could qualify should they have greater capital, as you talked about before. So that's kind of where we're going in that regard. Moving the building to McCarter, I think will change a great deal as well, certainly for the kids in McCarter. When you start having gifted teachers at a school with a principal, even our staff development, because we have principal meetings at different schools, when we are having staff development and talking about here, here identification and here opportunities. So we definitely have some new opportunities before us that we're excited about, but really the goal of expanding so the marginalized that often don't get the kind of services that the privileged groups receive are viewed. And even beyond that, the privileged groups as well, when we start talking about kindergarten first, second, third, that we're identifying kids as early as possible at much larger numbers than what we have now. So the numbers should look a little different next year. I do want to mention there was an 18% increase at one level this year, which we, you know, woo-hoo, we're excited about that. So we continue to move forward, though, in a much larger, at a much faster and larger pace in the future.
And I just wanted to add something to the number of kids placed. We have already placed more than we placed last year. So while the referrals are up, I believe our placement will be up as well.
Excellent. Any questions from board members? Ms. Kirk.
Just to follow up there, nothing more. It's just that not having those facts and figures in front of us makes it hard. So I would hope that next year when we do this or we talk about it again, we'll have things that we can look at more than just what you gave us today. So we could look at where we're picking up the kids, the demographics of those kids, how many of those kids, what's the percentage of those kids that actually get placed, and what is the tool that gets us most of the kids? Is it the specialized testing you're doing? I mean, those are the things that would be helpful for us, at least for me. So I would appreciate a little bit more, it's not you, just telling you that I would appreciate more next year. I'm not upset, I just think that would be more helpful to us in our thinking and planning.
And I'll make all that available. I do an end-of-year report every year, and I'll just give that to Dr. Anderson, she can have somebody to send that to you.
And it's helpful when you're here that we look at that stuff, too.
It is.
Because when most of the times we can ask you questions, well, what does this really mean in this whole scheme of things? I mean, thank you.
Dr. Morrison.
Just very briefly, I, do you all follow these gifted kids as they go all the way through and then out, out to college, or what colleges they go to, how they do and what they do?
I am not aware of anything formal that we do. I know Steinberg West tracks all of our kids and the scholarships they get, and I know that they've compared that between buildings, but a formal report, I'm not aware. But we could definitely look into that and get it set up.
Do you think, I mean, that would be a good thing for the gifted program, don't you think, to say that these kids did wonderful? I mean, they got out and they had a career. And also, if you could track them, maybe these kids could come back and help you out.
Absolutely.
And Dr. Morrison, this year, remember we hired the College and Career Advocate? So this year, we actually are tracking all of our students. In the superintendent's conference room today, you may not have noticed, but there's a map up, and we're actually tracking where every college is they're going to. And then you'll see the, so when you come back the next board meeting, that map should at least be 95% complete. Right now, it's 25% complete, if that. But so really, that post-secondary follow-up, which is a piece that we did in our last district for, you know, we tracked every kid across the district, that's really what we should be doing. Where do all the kids go when they leave us? Whether they go to college, whether they go in their career, do they stay in their career? So we anticipate doing that, and part of Dr. Duncan's work, our College and Career Advocate will be doing that, and certainly so you'll know where the gifted kids go as well.
Okay. I'd like there are no further questions. Thank you all very much for your work. Thank you for the report, and thank you most of all just for what you do for our students. Excellent. Great to see an 18% increase from the big video. Our next item on the agenda is our lone action item this evening, and it is the report from DCAC, their committee recommendations. And I take it everybody got a chance to look at both of these reports. The second one that we were missing at the last meeting was added last week to this agenda summary. Are there any questions or any discussion that anybody would like to have about either of these two reports? If not, I believe our action tonight is to receive the reports, a motion will be in order to receive the two reports from DCAC. Thank you, Reverend Williams. Thank you, Dr. Morrison. There's a motion and a secondary discussion on the motion. If not, then I think we are ready to vote. Don't see any DCAC parents in the audience tonight. As we vote, I just remind people that for every, all 10 years since I've been on this, every single year, we've got reports from DCAC. Even if we don't adopt, you know, in total the recommendations, we always take something from them and put it into action, which I was on DCAC before I was on the board, and I can tell you that was not always the case. So...
My voting is closed. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so our next item is the proposed meal prices, and I don't see Ms. Yonkey with us, but Mr. Robbins is going to.
Mr. Woods, we were intending to move this back a meeting.
Okay.
So we weren't going to discuss this until the second meeting ended.
Okay. We can table this item until the next agenda. I know I could always just skip over it for, by chair's prerogative, but I think we probably ought to have votes table it so it'll show up automatically at the next meeting. All right, I look at Ms. Kelly to make sure I'm right on my parliamentary procedure. There, Reverend Williams, Ms. Johnson? Fantastic, thank you, Reverend Williams. Thank you for the second motion, the secondary discussion on the motion unseen. All those in favor, please raise your right hand, those opposed, same sign, motion passes. And with that, I believe we are to the spot on the agenda, board member comments. And in keeping with tradition, we are going to start at the end of the table with former Representative Kirk.
Well, these days I'm going to cheer. I don't know what to do if somebody else talks before I do. Just on the DCAC, I just hope the report, the one on not using PE and recess for discipline, I mean, recesses for discipline and looking at recess coming before lunch, thank you, I almost said after lunch, before lunch, but working on that really, really hard. I mean, the research is so clear on that sort of thing, and that we still don't quite get it in all of our schools, that's a little on the troubling side. So I'd like to see us work really hard on looking at that. We've got the summer to get those schedules worked out. I hope they can do that. That just came to me as I was looking at the DCAC reports just right now. Staying in from recess, when you're a kid that can hardly sit still in your chair anyway, seems to be really counterproductive thinking, so I just think it really needs to be something that we do differently. Couple of things have come up for me, and they all kind of centered on this, we had a presentation maybe a month or so ago for the alternative school, and I remember, if I remember correctly, that presentation was really sort of an outline of what people were thinking, but we really didn't have the plan very, it wasn't all thought out yet. We had questions as a board, and we're getting close to the end of the year now, when I'm hoping that that is thrashed out enough that we could have another report, because I'm, you know, the rumor mill around here, when it gets to me, I figured it's all over the place already, because I'm usually one of the last ones to hear things. So I'm hearing that Amundale West is going to be our alternative school, I'm just telling you what I'm hearing, that we're picking staff for the alternative school already. I think, well, what's the plan? What's the plan? That, I mean, we had the outline, but there were a lot of questions we had, and I thought we're probably going to come back with answers about how we're going to be addressing these things, because we never really said, we really wanted to go full steam ahead. We said, okay, but I don't think we had enough information to do, to say a whole lot as a board. So I'm hoping that we can get more definitive information, and I would certainly hope that their plan is so well thought out that they're ready to go on day one in August, whenever the kids start coming back, and we already know, because some of the kids are probably, we would want to see as participants in those programs. So I guess that's really what, the primary thing that I had on my list, this is what everything related to that. And the other thing is that has, I have had two or three now, now different people not coming to me with this as their primary thing, but taking me aside and saying, you know, I think we need to really think about how we're doing these tardy things, particularly at the high school. Kids have figured out that you can take your lunch, your early lunch, and then stay there through most of the next lunch, and then go back to your class and still be kind of as having been present, just for the last few minutes of class. I mean, it's craziness. So I don't know, huh?
Have a class.
Have a class, or whatever it is. I'm just saying, whatever it is. So, and it's come to me a couple of times, so several, it's not like this was the primary thing they were just talking about and just standing around, said, do we need to get a handle on this? I'm not sure it's helping the way we want it to help. Anyway, I'm just bringing it up, that's something that's just been coming up, we might want to take a look at what's happening. I'm not so worried about elementary school, it's our high schools, and this time of year probably it's even more of an issue. So just take a look and see, because if kids aren't even there for 10 minutes, 15 minutes, obviously they miss most of their class, and the learning isn't going on. So if we're expecting them to be getting some learning, so engaged in themselves and some kind of learning, we may be missing that for some, certainly it's not all of our kids, but I'm certain there's a little coddling in there that's figuring out, I don't have, I'm not tardy and I'm not going to get turned in, or there's no consequence, et cetera, et cetera. So just to think about it. And that was all, but I really appreciate the report tonight. It's helpful to get these reports. Appreciate it.
The highlight of the meeting for me tonight was honoring Dr. Gordon and her staff. You know, not to diminish the importance of learning, of teaching and learning, the basics of reading, writing, and arts and those kinds of things, but teaching character to our students is a trait that will last a lifetime, and I've heard them instead, so hopefully they can continue that. That was a highlight for me.
I think the highlight of the last couple of weeks was an opportunity to celebrate the scholarships with the time park and opportunities to do that. I was impressed that the student was the one that kind of had, this is his brainchild, they keep this time to celebrate all of the students that were received the scholarships. And we know that they also have a network that works with me as well. And so we just want to congratulate all our students, but it's an exciting time as we approach graduation. Good time again.
I have a couple of things. I did go to McClure and meet Dr. Gordon, and I met the gentleman that was here, and that was two years ago, and bagging over what they were doing, and I was just blown away by what they were doing. And it was just a very short visit, but obviously, that's blossomed. The other thing I wanted to pass on to everybody is that I went on the 28th and met with the physical education teachers and the biology teachers about our sex ed curriculum. And we brainstormed with the teachers on what they needed, and I made, I found eight things that we as a district can help them out. I passed that on to Dr. Anderson and Ms. Wallace. I also sent it to Mr. Woods and Dr. McCarthy, and if you guys would like those eight things, I can, I'm very happy to send them to you on what we found. And then you can look at them and you can certainly add to them, but I thought it was, and I've had emails since thanking me for coming to that and listening to them. I think it's very rewarding to listen to the teachers and help them out as much as we can.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. I want to thank you, by the way, too, for all of the extra work that you put into that over the last two years. I remember initiating the conversation, and we had, just happened to have it, it'll be GYN. Yeah, you know, might as well use them, right? I guess that's what those are for. But thank you so much for giving us your expertise and free services. Everybody at this table gives lots of free services, you know, so... With that, I think we are at the end of our agenda, and we are, we're doing more items of discussion. I think we are prepared to entertain a motion to adjourn. There is one. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you, Ms. Kirk, for the second motion, the second, the discussion on the motion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed, same sign, the motion passing unanimously. We're done.